Agenda is roll call.
Commissioner Blair?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Petrie?
Here.
Commissioner Bellows?
Here. On Zoom.
Commissioner Gauthier?
Here.
And Chair Buhner?
Here. Okay, do we have any minutes tonight?
No.
Okay. We're scheduled for one legislative hearing tonight related to land use application number 2025-05, the annexation of Charlin Woods II. The hearing format for this procedure is different from a quasi judicial land use matter. You know, members of the public may provide testimony in the same manner. Members of the public may participate in person, in writing, or online. We ask that a copy of all written materials be submitted to the city clerk so that they can be made a part of the record of the proceedings, and that's Ronnie. The grounds for appeal of a legislative decision are contained in ORS Chapter 197, specifically 197620. If you wish to speak for, against, or just comment in any way you need to and have any materials, the city recorder will need a copy of those. For in-person testimonials, please write your name and all other required fields on the form in the back of chambers. It's out there in the... Ah, Ronnie is providing the form even as we speak. For testimonials via Zoom, please write your name and indicate whether you are in support, in opposition, or neutral in the comments section. Names will be assigned, a number in the order in which we receive comments, and those folks will need to raise their hand, correct? Thank you. When I call your number, please identify yourself and make your statement. The maximum amount of time allotted for testimony is three minutes for individuals, 15 minutes for the applicant, and persons representing four or more persons, 10 minutes for the applicant's referral, rebuttal, excuse me. If your testimony would be repetitious, but you would like the opportunity to appeal the decision, you must sign in on the hearing sheet located at the council chambers, or type your name in the chat box, or let staff know, and they will type your name in the chat box. Only those who have appeared in Planning Commission in person, Zoomer, and writing will be allowed to speak on appeal of this item to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Please be advised that all participants in person or via Zoom are expected to conduct themselves respectfully and professionally. Interruptions of public meetings containing inappropriate comments, hate speech, sexually explicit language, foul language, or any language suggesting bodily harm to others will not be tolerated. If any participant engages in such conduct, the mayor, excuse me, I reserve the right to immediately mute and remove said person. This action aligns with our community maintaining a safe and respectful environment for all participants. By joining this meeting, you acknowledge and agree to adhere to these guidelines. So I call to order the public hearing regarding land use number 2025-5, annexation of Charlin Woods II, at 6:04 PM. Do any member of the Planning Commission, has any member of the Planning Commission had an ex-party contact they wish to disclose? Online? Carol? Um, no, nobody? Okay. Thank you. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission to hear this matter? If so, please state your name, address for the record. Hearing none, we will move forward. Does the Plan, any member of the Planning Commission want to disclose, boy, I can't talk today, any actual or potential conflicts of interest? Carol? Nope. Are there no from both of them? Okay, thank you. Um, does any member of the audience wish to challenge, any individual member of the city council? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Nobody online? Okay. Let the records reflect that no one has challenged the, any member of the Planning Commission. For all the, again, when you're ready to testify, you will state your name and address for the record, and that includes saying whether you are a resident or a non-resident of the City of King City. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that failure to raise an issue in person by Zoom or by letter today to the Planning Commission, you will be unable to raise that issue at a subsequent time on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed for the criteria that the staff will describe or other criteria in the plan or land use code which you believe apply to the decision. Failure to specifically address the approval criteria that staff will describe precludes the raising of that issue to the criteria on appeal. And that includes that if you or any member of the public chooses to testify about issues that are not part of the criteria for this decision, you will be asked to stop that testimony because the Planning Commission can only look at issues that apply to the criteria for this hearing. Okay, with that, I will call staff to make your report.
Thank you, Chair. So, we have an annexation application, LEU 2025-05, brought to the city by New Home Company and Pacific Community Design. This annexation includes one single property over between Elsner and around 150th, 154th, along Beef Ben Road. The property is a little bit more than five acres, 5.27 acres. It has 100% consent from the one property owner. They have submitted adequate proof that everything that was required in the annexation application was included in their application, and all of the approval criteria have been met. The local wetland inventory is still being processed by the Department of State Lands over the applicant did provide the city with an approved wetland delineation, approved by Department of State Lands that concurs with the wetland scientists that there are no wetlands on the property. Additionally, the surrounding properties were part of the Charlin Woods Annexation and Development proposal, but have been already delineated and inventoried, so the concern about that, I believe, has been satisfied. And we're expecting to get, hopefully, the final approval letter from Department of State Lands within my communications with them. Other than that, it seems like a pretty straightforward annexation. Again, it's one single property. I did receive a find from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon requesting that the city make Goal 10 findings in our report. Goal 10 is Oregon statewide land use goal number 10 that deals specifically with housing. My response initially to the Housing Council was that considering this is an annexation, I don't feel as if it really has anything necessarily by itself to do with housing, and that also since it's an annexation in a planned area in the urban growth boundary that has already been master planned. All of the planning for the areas that it is in had to comply with Goals 10. So with that being said, the annexation inherently is implied that it complies with Goal 10 because it's in the planning area and all the criteria for the master plan and the development code will have to apply to it. I reached out to the applicant just to let them know that we received comments, and the Fair Housing Council also wanted to be clear that they were not opposing the annexation, and the applicant responded to them stating essentially what I have told you as well. With that being said, I did want to mention that zoning that automatically applies after the annexation is approved, which would be Beef Ben Neighborhood, allows for middle housing, it's high density, and with a minimum of 18 use per acre, and it complies with the Goal 10. And so, in conclusion, the staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission is to recommend approval of the annexation to City Council.
And we will be getting the application for the actual land use development shortly?
Well, that application has already been submitted to the city. It's currently being reviewed, but I think it'll probably be on the table in a couple months, ideally after this annexation has gone through the whole process of it at City Council.
I want to remind everybody on commission, we do not have jurisdiction to approve annexation. We can recommend approval of the annexation to the City Council, which I assume will be hearing this. Is this on their calendar already?
This will likely be on August 20th agenda.
All right. Um, please, applicant, applicant, boy, I'm having trouble talking to you. Anybody else have any further questions? I thought this was fairly straightforward, and we kind of went through this when we did the original application. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Pam Verdarell, guys probably recognize me by now, I've been here a lot. Again, very straightforward application for annexation for this property. It simply is kind of the property that completes the Charlin Woods neighborhood quite nicely. It follows all the same development patterns that we've already put in front of the Planning Commission. I believe we showed you all a shadow plat, and so you can see that that is consistent with what's required. And really just here to see if you have any questions based on that.
Any questions from?
Could you explain if it's legal to explain why this property was a holdout? It's not in the original Charlin Woods?
Sure. Oh, for our history, so there are two separate ownerships of the property. They're of the same family, but at the time that we came forward with the Charlin One application, they were not climbing as far as selling the property.
And I assume that the discussion that we had for the land use decision, which of course is not specifically relevant here, is going to apply that you used in the other Charlin. Yeah. Does anybody else have any questions?
Just a...
We have a small presentation.
Okay.
We're going to do a little bit more detail for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Hello?
Nice to see you again. Nice seeing you all. My name is Maureen Jackson, and I'm an associate planner with PCD. For the record, my address is 12564 Southwest Main Street in Tigard, and tonight I'm here to request that Planning Commission recommend approval of the annexation and the zone map amendment to City Council for the property located at 15800 Southwest Beef Ben Road. This annexation has been initiated by the property owner, who is being represented tonight by New Home Company. The requested annexation conforms to the double majority method, which requires 100% of the property owners and 80% of the registered voters on the property to sign a petition. So Exhibits G and H in the application are petitions signed by 100% of the property owners and 100% of the active registered voters that are in the territory. And these petitions have been certified both by Washington County Survey and the Elections Offices. And the subject property is also located adjacent to the existing King City city limits. So you can see on this slide, here we have a map of the property in relation to the existing city boundaries. So the 5.27 acre site, which is highlighted in yellow, is bordered by a property already in King City's boundary on the east, south, and the west side. And the next slide. So along with the annexation into the city's jurisdiction, we ask that the property be rezoned. So the site is currently located within Washington County's Future Development, the FD-20 zone. So we are requesting that the site be rezoned as the Kingston Terrace Beef Ben Neighborhood to conform with both the King City's Comprehensive Plan and the city's Community Development and Zoning Code. And as you can see here, the property is located within the Beef Ben Neighborhood, and this figure right here is the figure in the Kingston Terrace District chapter of the city's code. So according to the city's code, an update to the city's wetland, local wetland inventory is also required prior to annexation. However, there are no wetlands located on the property to be identified as significant. So a copy of the wetland delineation approved by Oregon Department of State Lands was provided in Exhibit J of the application. And this slide is just an excerpt from the report that identifies the location of a test pit and photos provided to DSL to support that delineation. And the next slide here, we have also provided a copy of the Clean Water Services Service Provider Letter that illustrates the property in relation to the water wetlands in vegetated buffer, which is located within the previously approved Charlin Woods property, which is tax lot 1,000. So the, as Max mentioned, the impact mitigation enhancements to those off-site resources were approved with the Charlin Woods Development Plan Review. And then these next two slides are just for reference. They better illustrate how future development of the property will be designed to seamlessly integrate into the previously approved Charlin Woods developments. And as Max said, that application is currently under review with a hearing hopefully in September. And of course, we're here to answer any questions.
The right of way is already annexed to King City, and that the Beef Ben Road is annexed from Center Line to Southernly Right of Way with the document. And I notice in the legal description, Exhibit G, the annexation that we're talking about includes that road, which this thing says is already annexed, and I'm just curious about it.
We will have to confirm that. It's my understanding that Beef Ben Right of Way to the Center Line has been annexed. We were working on both projects at the same time. That legal description will go to the Secretary of State.
It's already been...
Department of Revenue to verify and back to Washington County just to verify.
And Washington, you have the Washington County verification, and they're pretty diligent, and so that's why it seemed...
We'll have to...
Or at least look into it, it might be just fine.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to ask, Pam, you probably are the person to ask, and that is, I assume that you are still planning to start this entire project in 2027? Is that still correct? So this project is not going to be happening immediately. You're very busy to the west. Okay. Any further questions? And I'll open it for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify in favor of this application? Or anybody online, Ronnie, that would like to testify in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience or online who would like to testify in opposition to this application? Hearing none. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment on this application? Either here in the audience or online? Hearing none. Again, I remind anyone who is in the audience that failure to raise an issue at this hearing will preclude that issue being raised either at the city council or on appeal to Luba. And no, no other questions from the commission? I would entertain, and since there wasn't any testimony, you're not going to do any rebuttal? At least, I don't think you have any reason to do any. Okay. I would entertain a motion regarding this application, which, and I will refer, is 2025...
Madam Chair.
Yes. Public Attorney, close. Thank you. Case number, again, is 2025, and now I'm having a senior...
05.
05, thank you. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission make the recommendation to approve land use 2025-05, including, if any of the staff's report remarks lie, I didn't see conditional on it, so...
No.
Normally, we would throw that in.
Well, this is...
You still, you still type all this, all of things? I'll revise this in a short... I would like to make a motion that the Planning Commission recommend approval of land use 2025-05.
Fair enough. Thank you. Any discussion? It seems pretty straightforward, especially since it's sort of picking the little hole in the doughnut that was approved earlier. Okay, with that, yes, I was just going to ask you to do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gauthier?
Approve.
Commissioner Blair?
Approve.
Commissioner Bellows?
Approve.
Commissioner Petrie?
Approve.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Approve.
Chair Buhner?
Yes. It's unanimous? Okay, thank you very much for your attention, your attendance, and I'm glad we were able to do this in a short period of time, so you can get home and enjoy your dinner and get out of the heat as soon as possible. Okay, I received an email. There's nothing else on our agenda this evening. I received an... Oh, sorry.
That will fit into this.
Yeah.
Missing somebody.
Who are you missing?
Commissioner Gauthier, yes. Blair, yes. Bellows, yes. Commissioner Petrie, yes. Oh, Karen Mitchell.
Yeah, he said yes. In your next slide...
All right, so yes, I did promise the Planning Commission that I would write an update, given our last conversation. Unfortunately, Mike is no longer acting as city manager with the city as of last Thursday. That being said, it was unexpected and sudden, and I'm sure as you can imagine, I've been, staff has been stressed to pick up the pieces in his absence. So it's been a little bit chaotic, just trying to, you know, put the puzzle pieces back in place and keep the ship going as best we can. So I haven't had as much time as I would have hoped to dove the boat to the code that I was talking about. I hope you guys get it. With that being said, I did look into the parks, moved them over. I spoke with Keith, my predecessor, who's been helping me out. Keith Lighted. He's great help. And, you know, he was a planner for 40 years professionally in Oregon, so he's got a lot of background knowledge. And I also spoke with a couple planners over at Metro, one of their parks planners, Robert Spurlock, and also one of their just general principal planners, Glenn Boland. And I'm meeting with the Tuolotin, the City of Tuolotin's park manager tomorrow morning to kind of pick her brain and see what Tuolotin does. So there's a lot of different angles and a lot of stuff that goes into this, you know, adding a provision for requiring parks, especially when the city does not have a specific parks master plan, which we do not have a master plan for parks. If we did, it would likely have more concrete and specific locations for those parks and things that the city would be able to fall back on because a parks master plan is included in your comprehensive plan. Some things to consider that I mentioned last time came into play, so, you know, the density cannot be disturbed because the Kingston Terrace Master Plan has minimum density, it's 3,300 and some change, houses that need to be in the urban growth boundary. And that applies to what I was mentioning before with Goal 10, that's state law. The city cannot skirt on our responsibility for housing production for the sake of parks. So in order to require parks to be built with every development, or every development has a certain threshold, there has to be some giveaway for the developers to have wiggle rooms. So some, one idea that was brought up was potentially reducing setback requirements on homes, which would then create a little bit of space. It would make the lots somewhat smaller, but it would potentially give developers more flexibility to fit in that small little pocket park. But then there's other things to consider, so if you're creating a park, you have to look at people's property values might be going down because they can no longer include that land as housing land to a developer. We have to consider the transfer of ownership. How does the park get transferred to the city? Does it get transferred to the city? KCCA has its number of pocket parks that are all private, that are owned by the KCCA and technically only being used by the KCCA. What would the size be? There are a consistent theme that I heard was that people generally go to larger parks, where they have more amenities, they serve larger age ranges. So is it in the city's best interest to devote resources to a bunch of small parks or focus our SECs and things like that on really narrowing down the community parks? What's the usage? And then another thing is the maintenance of these parks. The city does not have a dedicated public works staff. The city has one public works manager, and that's it. So we do our maintenance, we, our public works staff does routine maintenance down at the park, but for mowing the grass and trimming the trees, we have a contract for that. So what's the cost of increasing a contract? What threshold does the city want to have? You know, are we going to have a whole contract for a quarter acre park? You know, how, what's the cost of that? So these were some considerations that were thrown around, and it's sort of, you know, it's one of those situations that the more you dig into it, the more you realize what gets into it, you know? You're digging out of a hole and into the sky sort of thing. So that is what I learned over the last two weeks. That is the conversations that I had. And I want to, I want to say again that I would really, I think it's a good idea because, again, we don't want to have just endless sprawl, green spaces to break up monotony in urban landscapes, even if it's just a field, you know? When I was in high school in Las Vegas, and I looked at a map and I measured it out earlier today because I was... out earlier today because I was talking to Metro, me and my friends would play catch, like with, at baseball, and like go boxing and stuff, at our little pocket park in the neighborhood, which was exactly a quarter acre, and it was two miles away from the nearest green space from our house. That's not necessarily the case in Oregon, because Oregon, Portland Metro has a lot of parks, and it's a little easier to maintain grass and stuff. But I personally find the value in a small park that you can just walk to and, you know, go home in five minutes, eat lunch, and then come back. And it's like, it's a communal space for, for kids, I think. So, I'm on it, I'm working on it. I'm going to try to come up with a good idea. With the density, in order to change the code, I have to write findings that comply with the land use goals and with the master plan. The master plan should be easy because it does call for pocket parks, so there's no restrictions on that. But for the density, I'll have to come up with some sort of ratio or some, some solution that will allow me to make findings that the density and goal five will not be disturbed if we are reducing the la, the buildable housing land. And so, that's going to be tricky to figure out exactly how to do that. Does anyone have any questions on that, on what I just, that word salad that I just found out?
I have a question, but go ahead. Go ahead.
Why do you throw out kind of that one?
Well, you know, you usually do, so I-
I, um, I have a question. I have a question for Max. So, if we were to have a larger park, that, the land that is on is going to lose more value than just a pocket park on a smaller piece? And if they lose a lot of value, they may ask for takings because the city decided to do a park there, and that lowered their value? And I've run into this before. What do you think, Max, Gretchen?
What was that last part, Carol?
You kicked out.
Oh, oh, did I? Okay. Can you hear me clearly now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I lost the last little bit of that sentence.
Well, I was wondering if Gretchen or Max had any comment about a takings? If a larger park is put on somebody's land that if it had housing on it, it would have a lot more value?
So, the, if you look at the maps in the Kingston Terrace Master Plan for where the, where the community parks are located, they're located generally in the flood plain because that land is not buildable because it's in the flood plain. And I have been discussing, a frequent visitor of City Hall is Mr. Cliff Harold, who owns property over on Elster, and the, the community park on the parks map is directly on his property. His property is considered to have some wetlands on it. It's very heavily forested, it has some difficult topography. I know the new home company has had some discussions with him and his property. So, those considerations were kind of put in place when they were developing the master plan. Well, the, the city would have to compensate for any kind of land like that in the form of SDCs or, or what have you. We would, if we wanted to go out and build our own park somewhere, we would have to acquire the land, either from a developer or from the property owner if they were willing to sell.
I, I will make a comment, having been through this more than once. If, if the city were to decide that they wanted to use this gentleman's property, they would, the process is that there would have to be a formal appraisal done by the appropriate S P. And often, if, if one or the other party is not happy with that, then the process is that the owner hires and gets an appraisal, and the city gets an independent appraisal. And then there's a decision made based on three different appraisals, they'll usually be able to come to a decision at that point. We went through this when I was on the Tiger Council multiple times, as we were annexing and building areas that hadn't been developed. But very rarely does, does there a problem arise if you get independent appraisals, again, brought by either party and you've had a neutral appraisal. That usually solves the problem. As to value, it's the value of the bare land. That's the reality. As opposed to being developed. It also has to do with if, you know, how buildable the land is. Is it partially in the flood plain? That makes, I mean, it's not buildable at that point. So, its value is purely as, either it's not worth anything, or it's worth the value of the land for some kind of open space development. So, if you have any questions- I, I had a thought. Carol, do you have anything else to ask? Or Commissioner Gauthier?
I'm good.
Thank you, Carol. Could you ask, if Commissioner Gauthier has any, any comment?
I don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you. This is a big issue. I think eventually the city needs to do a parks master plan. That's obviously something, we're not a little itty-bitty town. We have to plan and start acting like a grown-up city. But with that thought in mind, and an issue that Carol raised in an email to me, I, I copied my response to Ronnie that we would, I would bring this up, is that we really need to have a workshop about middle housing and getting some diversity in the housing types. We don't want to have just all stick houses, that's not very attractive. And I was going to suggest maybe we have a workshop to discuss some of these issues. And then further, it's been my experience that the planning commission and council would have a joint workshop at least once a year, if not twice a year, to discuss big, big policy issues. And it seems to me this might be an issue that would be appropriate to have a joint workshop where we could bounce ideas off, and, and Max could give us a really good discussion of all of the areas that he has been investigating. Obviously, you're going to get, have an opportunity to do a lot more investigation over the next couple of months.
Yeah.
I was thinking maybe this fall, we can have a joint meeting where we can bounce ideas around, because this is really an important issue for the entire community.
I would just advise that, for one, both the city council, or no, the city council's full right now. Right? You're with, you voted minus one. So, the city council's not full, neither is the planning commission. So, given that, there's some turbulence going on, I would just say that we, and also the city council is overloaded right now with their, their meetings are-
I'm thinking about tomorrow.
It's going to be a while.
I was thinking two or three months from now, things will have calmed down, hopefully. And hopefully, the vacancy on both entities will have been resolved. But I think this is a really important issue that our commission has more knowledge about because this is something we have to talk about with each development. And as a, as a rule, land use decisions come to the city council maybe once a year, and it's something they're not as familiar with because they aren't dealing with it all the time. So, that's my thought, that we should look at that.
And with the, I agree. I think, I think the ci, or the, the planning commission should probably hold a workshop soon, maybe sometime in August. With the diversity of housing, I need to ask legal, you know, what, what is the precedent for that being in the development code? Because the Kingston Terrace Master Plan and all of the Kingston Terrace Development Code, it allows for the diversity of, of housing, but I don't know if the city has the power to mandate individual developments to provide housing diversity if everything is included under the umbrella of middle housing, which is the case of what the Kensington Square development was. It, it was all middle housing. They all built, you know, the same models essentially, but it's middle housing, and once you start regulating middle housing, it gets very tricky with the state. So, I don't know if the city has the power to actually do that.
Well, we, I don't think it hit, hit us hard as when we did the town center because it provided, the developer provided, a wide variety of different types of housing.
Right.
And I think that issue kind of was lost because in that big development, there were lots of different kinds of houses. You know, you had from apartments to townhouses to cottage with regular, single family.
And I know this is slightly different, but I know this has been a consistent issue for a lot of cities, is that they're, they're putting in a lot of zoning for mixed use, and no one wants to build commercial spaces in residential areas because they don't make as much money. And it's harder to fill those spaces up. So, you know, it's going to be, it's, it's tricky situation right now.
I'm not talking about commercial, I'm talking about-
I know, but I'm just saying that, you know, it's kind of, in my mind, it's sort of related.
Well, we went through this when the city created its first mixed-use development area, the corner of 131st and Fisher, and there was a lot of controversy about that at the time.
And I have been in discussions with the developer over there, and nothing at all has been decided yet. They're still in the concept phases, but they are, they're moving on it.
Yeah.
And so, we should see, I think they're talking, again, very early concept, but they're talking about potentially putting in an apartment building with a cafe, a coffee shop, which I think would be nice.
My concern is I want to make sure that the city council has an opportunity to get up to speed on this, on these issues that the planning commission is dealing with on a regular basis, so that we all move forward in a manner that everybody's on the same page. And it's unfortunate, I, I faced this when I was on the Tiger Council, that it was really hard for some of the councilors because they didn't hear land use cases. It was maybe once a year.
It's very nice to see two of our city councilors here at this meeting tonight.
Understand. And that's my concern. I want to make sure that everybody has the same amount of information and opportunity to participate as we develop our goals and processes for the future.
Well, and if we eventually do, you know, these code amendments, they need to go through the city council anyway, so it, I agree with you, Chair. I think it's important to bring them into the pool sooner rather than later, but I think, you know, we got to let the-
This is, this is a big deal.
I think we just need to let the dust, the dust settle a little bit right now in the city.
Well, I'm hoping within three months, things will have settled. Maybe October.
See if I have a boss in three months.
Yeah.
Actually, I have a question for you. And you mentioned you'd have discussions with other cities. Did you get any feedback regarding pocket parks and usage that they've seen with those parks, whether or not they're even used?
Yes, I did. That was the general consensus, was that they weren't used.
Yeah, that's been my observation. There's a pocket park on 136, no, 131st. It's in Edgewater, and I have yet to see anybody in the park sitting at the picnic table or doing anything, so.
That's the one by the screen?
That's the Roseberry one, Roseberry, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I want to chime in here, that we are building, we're building neighborhoods that have very little personal or private, private space. And if your kids want to go out, if you want to have a tree bigger than a stick, you need to have, you know, backyard. And these don't have backyards. And I did a, I did a study when I was in school of, I asked people to, to tell me about the first thing that they remember. And the younger they got, I got more remembrances of their indoors, their, their rooms, things like that. But as you get to older people, you know, at, at the ti, you know, 50, so they'd be in their 50s right now, a lot of the time, their first remembrances of a place had to do with the outdoors. And I just take that as a, an indication that the outdoors is becoming less and less relevant to people's lives, to people's remembrances. But if that happens, we're going to destroy our, you know, our world. So, it's, I think it's as important to our future to have something that people can actually, you know, can participate in the world outside their homes and in community. That's my philosophy and what I found in my studies.
Carol?
Like you said, uh- Thank you for laying the foundation so that, so that we could end up making some of this happen. So, I'm just, thank you.
Now, we are scheduled for the end of August for the development application on the-
End of September.
It'll be end of September. Okay, so currently, we don't have a meeting.
That is correct.
How does the commission feel about having a meeting just to really talk about these things, having a workshop?
Because also, one other thing I was going to say is, anything we can do to help-
Yeah.
I, I believe I speak unanimously where, where they're going.
Do you think having a meeting the, the fourth Wednesday in August would be a viable time, if you have had the time to do a little more digging?
Uh, sure. So, August 27th.
Does that work for folks? Are people going to be out of town? Catherine? Yeah, it's a normal day, planning commission.
Would that be August 27th at 6:00 P. M.?
Yeah. Would that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Carol, would that work for you?
I wanted to find out if it's just a workshop and we don't have a work problems running underway, can we have it in the morning? That be a problem?
It would be fine with me. Commissioner? How about, you know, we have somebody who works full-time.
I'm fine with that.
Pardon?
I'm fine with that. That works.
Um, 10 o'clock?
Okay.
Or is it 10 A. M.?
I like to drink coffee during these meetings, but I can't drink coffee in this place tonight.
No, this, that's fine. I don't drink it ever, but, um, all right, so we-
Before you close, I have a few announcements.
Oh, no, I wasn't quite there, but so- We have agreement that our next meeting will be on August 27th at 10 A. M., and we're going to be having a workshop to talk about some of the issues that were raised on our last meeting when we were talking about potential ordinance changes, right?
Um, I wanted to find out if it would be okay, Ronnie's probably the person to talk with, if, I would like to send some of the articles that I've been reading, some of the information that my fellow members, fellow commissioners can read or not, but I'm, I want to, I want to just add some information as we go along in the workshops without having to just suddenly give it to everybody there, sort of thing.
Well, I would appreciate that, Carol, because you're our landscape expert.
Oh, thank you.
Just, Carol, just send them to Ronnie and he'll get them out to everybody. Just, Carol, just send them to Ronnie, and he'll get them out to everybody, and he'll make a hard copy for me.
Okay.
Add it to the agenda for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Carol. If there's nothing more on this subject, thank you for reminding us, Carol. I wanted to bring this up anyway. Ronnie said he has some announcements he needs to make.
Yeah, so in August, August is going to be kind of a busy month. So, August fifth, I have the city council, and you guys are invited, and then our other committees are invited too. I have parliamentary training procedures. That's August fifth from 5:30 P.M. I believe three-hour training. I get it recorded for folks that will not be here. Following week at 9:00 A.M., I have training for, I have LOC here for elected essentials. You guys are more than welcome to come.
And what time is that?
That is at 9:00 A.M. That's a six-hour class, six-hour class.
Wow. And that's the date of August twelfth?
Well, yeah, well.
And Ronnie, I didn't understand the words, what it is.
I don't understand the words coming out of your mouth, sir.
Okay.
Oh, he had me on TV. Carol, so on August fifth, I have a parliamentary training at 5:30, and then at, on the August twelfth, I have LOC training for elected essentials. Planning commission is more than welcome to join us.
Okay, thank you.
And at that, 9:30, 9:00, 9:00 o'clock.
We also have a couple openings on the charter review committee, and I believe that there's space for a planning commissioner on, to be on there. So, if anyone is interested in that, they meet second Friday of every...
I would love it if somebody from...
Second Friday of every month.
Would be willing to serve.
We're making some good headway. Just throwing that out there because councillor Gerhart got promoted to the city council for appointing.
And I will just pass on, one of the things that's not in the current charter is the makeup of the planning commission, and that's an issue that I feel to be in our...
I don't believe the planning commission is mentioned in the charter at all.
Correct. And in most city charters, the planning commission makeup is set forth, so I would like to see that. So, if I could get somebody from planning commission to participate, that would be Think about it.
Think about it.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, Gretchen, does this care? Contact, contact me, okay?
Yeah.
That's all I got. If anyone has any other...
Down, Carol.
Commission, have any other questions for staff? Hearing none?
And you're more than welcome to attend. It's at 10:00 o'clock on the second Friday of the month.
It'll be August eighth this month. All right, Chair, well, I believe that there's nothing...
I would entertain a motion to adjourn then.
I'm over with adjourn.
All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Second half? I'm sorry. Sorry, dude.
We are adjourned at 6:54. Thank you very much for being here, and I hope that some of you will take part in one or both of these trainings. LOC does a terrific job of training. Who's doing the parliamentary training?
I think it was supposed to be Ed.